...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for those who give up their time and their talents to make this a fine place to live, a fine place to raise our families, a fine place to be on a daily basis. Lord, we ask that you bless their endeavors, bless the decisions they make tonight, bless our community, Lord, in Christ's name.
Amen.
Amen. Are there any additions or modifications to the agenda? And I will go on to the invitation of Congress and the Republican Senate to discuss health insurance options.
Jim had contacted me a little bit back and asked me to talk to the council a little bit about what's offered to the city employees by way of health insurance. And basically, I mentioned this to a couple of the people, but I first came to know the city of Sublimity about 10 years ago through my box letter, a farmer's agent here in town. And I've worked since that time with your employees to try to find the least expensive and best coverage for the people. Right now, we're on an independent broker, health insurance broker, so I'm not tied with any one company. I don't work for any of the companies, but I represent all of the major health insurers in Oregon. And we're a small business, and this is a fairly small town, so I feel real comfortable with you guys. And this sheet that was passed out, there's two versions of it. I brought a little more colorful version this evening. It's got kind of a dirty orange color to it and some yellow splashes. There's probably more than you ever wanted to know about health insurance, but basically we have medical prescription, vision, and dental coverage for your city employees. And the medical is provided by Providence Health Plans. The dental is by standard insurance, and together they make a pretty fair package. Back in 2006, you could, as a government body, tie in with the government-sponsored health plans that are available out there. But the reason we went with kind of a separate group health plan at that time was simply fiscal. It was a lot cheaper because of the age of the people to go with an individual plan rather than the one that lumped the ages of all of the government employees. So that's why we did that. And I think NSA should be centerable money. I've never really looked in depth at your budget, but I'm sure somebody would have told me by this time if it happened. The renewal for your plans is August 1st, and so every year we take another look at the coverage. Now, is it still good coverage? Is it still the best you can get for the money? Are there fiscal concerns that you have that we need to cut back on the cost of the health insurance? And if so, how do we do that? Well, Providence, among many of the other carriers, has offered since 2014 the ability to keep your current plan, like President Barack Obama promised. And they call that my grandmothering your plan. It does not have all the bells and whistles that the Affordable Care Act plans do, and those are called platinum, gold, silver, and bronze. You've probably heard that on and on. The one thing notably that your Providence health plan does not include that an Affordable Care Act plan includes is pediatric dental, and that's dental for children under age 19. But we do have that covered on the standard dental plan, so your employees are covered by a plan that meets all the requirements of the Affordable Care Act. Now, it goes like this. The medical plan 2015, across the top, it has the deductible is $250. The out-of-pocket maximum is $1,700, which is really unheard of with the new plans. So that means that for one person in a family, the most a family would be at risk is $1,700 a year. And I didn't put all the benefits on here because it's just overworked. If you want to see those up better, we can dip into that. But basically, the rest of that top couple of lines is the cost per employee, per employee with spouse, employee with children, employee with family. And right now, we've got two families on the plan. I understand you're expecting to hire a couple more city employees that may or may not come on the plan. So the last two columns are just simply some information about if you do hire one person and it's an employee only, it would be the second to the last column. The last column would be, you know, what the costs would be and so forth if you hired two families, two employees, and they will put their families on. Right now, the city covers 100% of employee plus dependents, and the minimum is 50% of employee only. So you've done a really good job of taking care of your people, and I can mention on that. So up on the top right, there's a colored blue-yellow two, and under that is the $2,686.50. That's the cost for two families just for the medical. And I put the word base beside that because the other comparison's down below. The renewal that Providence is offering is a 0.5% increase, which is about $14 a month decrease. So if you keep the same plan, your budget really will not take a hit over, you know, what you've been carrying, aside from the fact that you may have a couple of new people on the plan. If we were to change to any plan other than that grandmothered plan, we have to go to what they call an Affordable Care Act metallic plan. And I've included a number of those down below here, them, and, you know, what the deductibles are. The one that's closest to your current plan would be a 13% increase, if you jump down that red column. To get any notable savings by changing plans with Providence, you'd have to jump to a $5,000 deductible plan, and that would save you 18% on your medical costs. Questions? What else would you like to know?
So what's projections? Because I heard next year it's not going to be so lean in rates. So what are you seeing for projections for next year? I think this year maybe an anomaly, but we're not going to be that likely next year.
Well, Providence has been fairly steady. That's one of the things I like with them. The increases for the plans that are grandmothered just have been pretty regular. I mean, they can be like 5% and they could go up to 10%, but the trick of that question is will we be able to keep a grandmothered plan another year? That's up to the federal government to say yes or no on that one.
Oh, so that's not, this is not indefinite?
This is not indefinite. So if, back in 2014, the mandate was you got to go to an Affordable Care Act plan. But then everybody kicked and screamed and jumped and hollered and said, hey, you told us that we could keep our plan if you liked it. And so the government came back and said, okay, you can keep it for 2014. And then, okay, you can keep it for another year, 2015. And now, one more year, they're dragging it out, you can keep it one more year. I think part of the problem is that what's happening to the insurance companies is pretty drastic. We've had a couple of insurance companies here in Oregon in real trouble. Moda Health, Life Lifes is really in Oregon, and the reasons for that basically are financial. A lot more people came on the plans than they thought were going to come on, and they were in much worse health than they figured they were. And so you've got a lot more expense delivered onto the insurers that you can take care of. And then the flip side of that is the federal government said, well, we'll act as reinsurance for you. And if you get hit with too many of these people that are taking too much out of your reserves, we'll pay you back for it, maybe 12% to Moda. And so Moda's now suing the federal government over that. Your question, Brian? I just live it day to day, month to month, year to year, trying to do the best we can for everybody.
Right.
So I don't know what we can do for your budget. Is your budget a July budget or how's it run?
Yeah.
Now, how often do you review the plan? How often do you review the policy?
I do it every year.
Now, do you meet with employees at that time?
I meet usually with the office manager. And I can, I'm always available to meet with the employees. I can do that anytime. My office is about halfway between Oxford and Turner, so, you know, I'm very handy and very willing to come out and do that every time.
Well, Adam, I'm thinking we're hiring the new city administrator, so that more than likely will be the new person.
And he'd be very happy to meet with that person. I just brought you all the details that he or she would bring out.
So since we're having a new administrator coming on, hopefully in the next month or August, for sure, I'd like to see that. Is it possible that we could extend this plan through January 1st and then have him look at the plan together? Is that a possibility?
The contract with the insurance company is month to month. You could stop this current plan in month to month, 30-day notice to Providence, just they were pulling out of this. So the reason we've been with Providence so long is because they've had the best prices over the years. They may or may not give us a short year. If I did the research and I go out and I quote all the different companies, and I come back and say Providence is still the best, I can ask them for a quote. And they may or may not give us a short year and start, you know, a new one in January, but we can explore all of those possibilities. But you're not tied into this for a year like Providence is.
So we're, it's a month-to-month?
Yes, you can cancel at any point with them. If we can find a better deal anywhere for your people, we can do that.
With them involved, so they know what is covered, what isn't covered, and what they're scheduled.
Right. And that's an excellent idea.
Good. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you for inviting me today.
Sure. And we'll go on to the staff reports, and Deputy Tom Barber is up here.
Are we going to get, well, I think we need to take some type of action on this health insurance because this is what happens every year. It comes to the end, and all of a sudden, the budget, and then there's this automatic, you know, we're paying a lot more.
A lot more this year versus the next year?
Well...
I wouldn't have the impression. I got this with just an information type of...
Well, the problem is it's connected with the budget, so we're going to have to approve the budget, which, and that was kind of my question. And this is what we've been kind of wrestling with for probably about five years, maybe longer, trying to figure out what the limit is for the city as far as money goes towards paying the benefits. Because next year, if they come back hypothetically, and they raise or they don't grandmother, I don't know what is that, I guess they don't like the grandfathers, so they go to mother or, I don't know what that is. But we've talked about this for a number of years, about putting a cap on insurance. So if an 18% comes, and we know there's getting some, it may not be that drastic, it may be another 5% next year, that we discussed with the council, and we said, fine, we will continue to coverage the platinum plan as long as it's available, with kind of the expectation that we cap it at that amount. So next year, if it goes up...
One second. Is this true, the platinum plan? Because it is, isn't it? The platinum plan...
This is better than the platinum plan.
No, this is the other...
Right. Yeah, because if I'm correct, Obamacare, these are the, it's not an equivalent, but that's what they offer. They don't even offer this plan. This plan is an exception that they've allowed us to keep, but there's no guarantee that they're going to keep that. And we've experienced, I think, over the last five years, one year we had a pretty hefty bump, 12% or something, that kind of stressed the process, and that's what we said. Where is the limit? The council should set a limit on where we're going to go with this. Otherwise, next year it's 18%. What, you just spring it on the employees or... I mean, that's been the discussion.
Well, we did talk about that last year when we went to the budget, budgeting time or do that. Talked about payroll and all that good stuff. And we talked about sharing the expense with the employees, and, you know, there are many options that can be. The cap being one, we could start with a co-pay of $50 a month per employee or $100 a month. And that would be something that, you know, we opened up the door and said that this is something, healthcare is something that we have to watch, healthcare expenses we have to watch. So I think the employees know that we're looking at it each year.
Well, we've looked at the last five or eight years. We've never taken that. Wish we would have had, it would have been maybe a more fair discussion than maybe we can have next time, to show in the last five years where we've gone with insurance. And I think you're going to see a pretty hefty increase over those last five years to push to that some point where now it's like, you know...
I'd be happy to put that together for you if you want.
Yeah, I would like to see that.
We would not have been able to make a decision for Providence until, this doesn't begin until August 1st, so July 15th would be the latest date. We could tell them we want to make a change.
Yeah, and I'm not proposing a change. That's not what I'm saying. I think the plan here, as long as it's, from what you're telling me, or that I understand, I mean, you're not going to find this deal anywhere, as long as it holds. But if it doesn't hold, then either way, it's going to cost us more money if they don't let us continue with the plan, based on what we have here.
Right. There are lots of options besides the ones that we have here that we can look at.
Right, but they're all more expensive.
But like I said, to come up with any notable savings at this point, from what we currently have, I mean, I consider 18% savings, the bottom one down here, is a decent to look back and worthwhile, but you'd have to drop through to $5,000.
Oh, yeah, and I think that, yeah, that...
The other thing is that the scene out there is changing all the time. So I would be happy to put together that history for you if you'd want that, and anything else that would be helpful. And I'd be glad to come back for another meeting with a group that wants to really tackle this issue, if you'd like me to.
Do we want to do that, or do we want to, how do you get that information? I'd love to see. And then task the administrator with this, with one of these projects?
Well, he's not in on it until July something.
Well, we won't be having any traction until August.
Yeah. But she's saying... Truly. I mean, yeah. I mean, I think the plan where we're at, we're not going to beat it. I think that's a great deal, but I think our discussion has been, but...
Well, I guess the part that I'm looking at, when I look at this, how it compares to other agencies or groups, because I know I never had anything like this for deductibles with my insurance. I mean, I actually wound up paying, I was covered, my spouse was covered, I had to pay for my, for the children. And, you know, and I guess that's where, looking at this, because we're dealing with the public's money. And when you look overall benefits, and I guess that's the question I have, is where we're at, you know, and with the surveys that were done on our salaries and benefits and everything, you know, we were up there at the very high end. So the last salary benefit that was done, so I...
I'm here, we were above 100%.
Well, we were, we're way up there. We're at the upper end. I mean, if you look at a couple of them, they were at over 100%. So...
Could you give us that information for the next time possibly shows?
I'd be happy to do that. When is the next council meeting?
July, the 2nd, Monday and July.
Sure.
And then a part of that, I guess it should be that discussion too, is if you have a single employee or employee that's just giving benefits for themselves, and it's 479, right?
Correct.
And then you have an employee with a family, they're getting $1,343. I mean, there's an inequality there about one giving more benefits. And I know in the company where I work, they refund that difference back to the employee.
I see what you're saying. In the manual, it says that there isn't, you can't get that money's back.
Right, I know, but I'm just saying that's a benefit that's really not an equal benefit, you know, by, and so, I mean, that should all be a part of the discussion because, you know, if you have a family of four, you get $1,300, just you're penalizing me because I got a family of one and my spouse, so where's that, how can I not get the same monetary value for that?
Well, I guess the other part, looking at it, that I, whether or not we do it, pick the individual plan, or do we just put X amount of dollars into a health trust and let the employees get the best value or program that they can get.
So you're meaning setting a amount per month?
Per month.
Call that a health trust?
It's a health trust, yes.
And then the employees can get their money from that?
And that's, yeah, and that's covers, you know, it will be distributed for health benefits.
Okay, let's...
Do you know of anybody else that has the same plan?
Not a hand. Are you talking city or...
Anybody.
Anybody, no. It used to be quite common that you have these low deductibles.
But with rising costs, I mean, that, I'm not as to why, I mean, if you can't think of anybody, it must be a pretty special thing.
I will tell you that the family, typical family cost for insurance is anywhere from $1,200 to $1,600 now.
With the employee picking up a part of that?
That's on individual plans and kind of across the board. That's usually what I'm seeing.
Would the employee pick up a part of that?
That's just the total. And sometimes they do and sometimes they don't. Typically, on the non-governmental entities, they cover just the employee.
Right.
And then maybe 50% of the dependents or not the dependents at all, and the employee can choose to cover them or not cover them.
Right. That's, well, yeah, even for governmental, because that's what I pay for the state.
Correct.
They cover me, and then I got to pay for the additional people.
Absolutely.
That's what I was wondering. I've never seen this before. So I would like, maybe if you come back, if you could kind of help us.
Some options.
Yeah, and why we, I mean, we're such a unique animal, so...
Okay, thank you. We look forward to your July meeting, so we'll look forward to seeing you in July.
Oh, thank you so much, sir. I'm sorry, I'm a little hard to hear. I saw the looks going, I saw that. I heard words, and I thought, I'm looking stupid here.
Well, thank you for coming in. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll go on to staff reports. Tom Barber is in, I don't know if he's in the office or if he's here, but we do have his reports. And if anybody has any questions or comments, I'm right there. Carol, you know, how's things going in the office?
It's going well. The monthly gallon report was pretty normal. This monthly pump, you can tell summer's coming, that people are using much, there's a pump, 2.3 million more, and so the norm has been about 1 and 1/2 million more being consumed, so it's a sign that the pumps are probably working a little bit harder than the law is a little bit different.
So are you getting Lisa, are you getting Lisa broke in from the office?
Yes, yes, she's doing very well. Next meeting, she should be here, and I think she's going to be taking minutes.
Jason, I do have a question. It had been running, like she said, about 1.5 billion gallons more, and for some odd reason, it jumped up to 2.3.
Probably the pumping of more water. We ended up cleaning our four meters in the middle of this last month, so we should hopefully see a closer number next time. But we did start well number two towards the end of this month, so I don't think that should have any effect on the difference, but it's kind of hard. The more water you pump, the more you lose, I think, with the percentage of, you know, the meters being off and stuff. Nothing can be exact, I don't think. Storage, storage.
Yeah, storage. If you still take 1.5, you know, the...
We were running pretty consistent. I was going to, I was going to think you were going to go the other way, because we noticed that about, shoot, 30 gallons a minute on one of our wells when we clean the front, or we clean the meters, so...
After one year?
Eight months.
Eight months?
Yeah. So we're going to do that one more repeatedly, month by month, on that one, so. And the other ones were pretty much right on, a little bit different. Nothing more than 5, 10 gallons a minute on the other three.
Yeah, 10 gallons a minute.
The pump's running all the time, yeah, it can make a big difference, for sure.
Okay. I just, when I saw that, it was just, I thought we were making headway. You know, I can buy the 1.5 billion because that's our...
Yeah, I don't know what that would be on percentage-wise, if we get the percentage wise. I haven't had time to look at that and crunch the numbers. But it might be close on the percentage-wise than the gallons, maybe I don't know.
All right. I want to make sure we stay on topic.
Oh, we're trying.
So do you have any other comments, Carol?
No, I'm good.
Question ready?
Please. In this month's monthly newsletter, on the backside, we gave the report of the water, city water being tested. A lot of the tests are being did, but does the city test for lead?
We do do a lead and copper sample. We're on a bi-yearly because we've had no hits on that, and we do do that as a reported source.
Bi-yearly, is that twice a year or every two years?
Every two years. So we've been put on a reduced monitoring because we have had no hits. But it's all in your consumer confidence report we send out yearly, so you can see all that stuff.
That's what we're going to have to do, so...
Okay, thanks, exactly.
So next is the Public Works Director, and I have a note here from Maeve Bell Boyne. She says, "To the City of Sublimity Water Department, I just want to express how very much I appreciate the two men who came to my home this week to repair a broken valve causing water to run nonstop. You folks are such good citizens in our town and so fortunate to have dedicated employees such as you. Thank you." Good to her, Alan, and his group. Do you have anything else, Jason?
We, we got a new handheld this last month, or actually received it the month before, but we had some training on it this last month, and we got that all squared in, and we're going to be using it this, this month here, so. Yeah, and like I said, we stocked it up, well, number two, we had city hall here, so we are pumping a lot more water with the sprinklers going on and stuff. But other than that, business is normal.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Jason, Steve, do you have anything to leave in the part? No? Okay. Now, we have a special public hearing to consider proposed use of City Sublimity Revenue Sharing Fund and approval for 2016/17 project. So we declare this thing as open to a public, declared, it's declared open, the public hearing is declared open for us, 2021/7/17, to consider the proposed use of City Sublimity Revenue Sharing Funds. Anybody want to comment? Okay, uh, so we have to pass some of these resolutions, is that right? Resolution number one six one seven.
Right, I guess, uh, the idea of the public hearing would be a chance for, uh, somebody to make some kind of report, and then the public to make any comment, and then you guys to have a discussion, and then, I think, uh, coming out of that, then there's the opportunity to pass the resolutions.
I just have one comment. Um, Tom, Luley had mentioned to us that during the budget committee, that we should make a comment, whoever should comment to the public, just stating that we feel that this budget that we're passing will provide excellent services to our citizens even during the development of a new subdivision, and that includes a level of police protection and pedestrian safety. I just wanted to make that statement, that, uh, Tom was, wanted to make sure that we, as a council, felt very confident that this budget will take care of our citizens.
Any other comments?
Any questions from?
Wayne, you must have some. Okay. Well, let's, uh, let's start passing these resolutions, you know?
So I guess if there's no further discussion on, on this, then you can close the public hearing.
We'll close the public hearing, okay? Closed. So we'll, uh, we'll start working on these resolutions, and, uh, first one you have before you is one six one seven dash one, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. And, listen, pretty routine. Do we have to read it twice, Wayne? No, not resolutions, not the resolutions, okay. So do we have to have a motion on this, I guess?
State revenue, I'll just say, state revenue is the money that we receive from the state in different, different things, different...
The taxes?
Yeah, the taxes, or cigarettes, alcohol, I don't know. This is just saying that we can accept those terms.
I'll make a motion that we accept resolution sixteen seventeen dash one, the resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
Second, then move the second that we, uh, pass this resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. Then we have, uh, a resolution certifying City of Sublimity Services. Resolution one six one seven dash two. Do you have a synopsis of this, Carol?
It's just our, the services that we supply to the citizens. Police protection, the street construction, maintenance and lighting, sanitary sewers, storm sewers, planning, zoning, and subdivision control, and water service. Those are the services that the city offers.
Any questions? And how the letter came to motion to pass it?
I make a motion that we accept resolution sixteen seventeen dash two, resolution certifying the City of Sublimity's services, as listed.
Second? Then move the second that we, uh, pass this resolution certifying City of Sublimity Services. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And the third resolution. Adopting the budget, imposing and categorizing the tax and making appropriations for fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. And, um, this is basically our budget. Every year.
This is what we printed, uh, in the paper. That is the city's budget for sixteen seventeen.
We do have one correction, you know?
We do, exactly.
Being resolved at the amount for July one of twenty, one sixty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's a little further.
That's farther out than I want to be.
Radio question on this resolution. You're hiring a new, uh, city manager, is that correct?
Yes. City administrator.
Or administrator, and that is gonna take a pretty good chunk of money.
Well, I'll tell you what, Wayne, it probably won't because...
Are you gonna?
We were paying two people in there anyway.
Well, but you, you're gonna have the same salary for one that you're, that you're hiring, but is this, is the hiring of the city manager going to cut the services down or the budget down some other place to be within your total budget?
Jim, I, I'm not following what you're saying.
Well, you're, okay, you're hiring a new person. I don't know what the salary is gonna be, say just a hundred thousand dollars. Is that gonna raise our...
It won't be that.
Or?
It won't be that.
No, I mean, only just an example. Will that raise the, raise the city taxes? Or are you gonna cut budgets from other categories to, to suffice a severe increase?
Well, our increase for the city administrator, looks like it, his salary will be, um, could possibly be maybe ten thousand dollars more than what we're paying our other person in the office, the finance director.
Good.
Um, did we cut anything from other budgets to make up that difference? I don't believe we did. Um, the, the other expense that we're going to have is health insurance for one additional person.
And it's going to make a difference in the overall personnel cost a little bit. It's gonna make a difference in retirement, in payroll taxes. Um, there will be increases in all of those. But I believe that that was figured into the budget.
Yeah, and it, we didn't think it was that substantial. We wouldn't need any additional money. And I don't foresee it in the future, I think.
All right, cool.
That's a good question.
Yeah. The fact is, Wayne, he may save us not a bunch of money.
I'm just wondering, though, you know, creating a new position, you'd be off on money.
Well, you know, it's a new position, but it's, uh, if you look at it financially, minus and plus, it looks like it could help us, you know? Okay, any other questions about this budget? So, uh, we'll ask for a motion to approve it.
I make the motion that we accept resolution sixteen seventeen dash three, resolution adopting the budget, imposing and categorizing the tax and making appropriate appropriations for the year two thousand sixteen seventeen.
Second? Then move the second that we pass resolution number sixteen seventeen dash three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Well, that takes care of those resolutions, huh? Okay. Action item, software upgrade and financial software to sell from Clarity to Connect. This is, uh, Carol, do you know what this is?
Yes, that, we had known for a little bit that we're gonna have to upgrade the Cessell software. And they sent us a, I don't know, I didn't have it in my pocket. They sent us, uh, I, I just did a sheet because I'm not very good at speaking things, so I kind of set the highlights of it on this, on this sheet here. I don't know if you see that here. Um, Cessell, it's, they're always updating things and upgrading things, and we started on Clarity at the very beginning when they were just starting it, in two thousand seven. And so they're now, about a year and a half ago, they upgraded to Connect, and we're still on Clarity. And because of that upgrade, so we're kind of getting behind the functionality of the program, it's slowing down. We're not keeping up with the technology, I guess, is what you want to say. We've been having some problems with the server, it's, um, with the Cessell part, it's slowing down more. Sometimes we have to wait for it now, and it's probably because we, we're not keeping up with the technology of... So when they sent this quote, I asked them to send us, um, an idea of what it would cost. Well, they're, they're no longer charging you to upgrade. They're charging from a, which we were paying six fifty a month, and our fee would be nine seventy-five a month. But they're not gonna, they're not charging us for this upgrade like they used to do. That would be like free to us, I guess, is what you're gonna call it, every, every month.
There's no initial, there's no initial fee?
Yes.
So how much would that increase in pass?
That, I don't know. I, I can't remember what it was when we purchased it. Well, we still have to purchase the modules, like if we wanted to increase any of them, we already have, I think, six or seven modules. So say we wanted another module, I don't know what it would be, but, say we took core, now we needed a core module. There would, there would be a fee for that. But there would, there wouldn't be a fee for then, every time they're updating the, the system or whatever the, that would be part of what they'd be.
Okay, sure.
In doing that, I asked, I asked them to send a list of what we would need for software upgrades and all that, too. So that they could, our system could handle it. And they sent that along, and I had our IT people at S E T C look at it, and then they gave us a quote of, um, the eight thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars to get all these things that are required to do the upgrade. Some of these things we're gonna have to do anyway. Some of it is, it's memory, it's, um, backup. So we're kind of behind a little bit maybe on some of those things, and we're gonna have to do those things anyway. So I don't understand all, all of this stuff, but I've been...
What will we get? What are we going to get?
We're, with Connect, we'll, we'll get, our program will run faster. Um, we'll get more functionality from it. Right now, we can't use, um, our accounts receivable at all, that module. We have that module, but we can't use it. It's not, there's a glitch in it. And when I talk to Cessell, they're, they're, they won't fix it now as long as we're on Clarity. They'll fix it when we go to Connect, but, so we're kind of having to work without it.
And are we, um, will there be a maintenance charge as well? Will there be, will we enter into a maintenance contract with?
We already, we're in a contract with them every month anyway with Cessell. We're paying them six hundred fifty dollars, and that cost will go up to nine seventy-five.
And does that include any maintenance?
Yes.
Of new programs that might need?
That includes, um, in their contract thing here, includes, um, this maintenance and support agreement covers all Cessell applications on our license sheet, so yes.
Telephone support. So they will not come out here? They'll answer your questions over the phone?
Right. They get online with us.
They can remotely connect into the system, and they can take control of the system, that we all do.
Fix what?
Fix whatever is needed.
I knew this was coming, I just wasn't prepared for it to happen.
That's the first I've ever heard of it. You know, every year, you come back with a report, it's great, we love it, we learned a lot, now I'm here, and it's not so great. It's upgraded, it's gonna cost us a fifty percent increase to keep it going.
And eight thousand dollars for updated data.
I mean, I just...
So I serve her.
What were the other options?
We don't have it. Well, I don't know if you have it or not. I, I mean, I would recommend you hold this for the new administrator because he seems to be knowledgeable in these two, or at least in the Connect or whatever the...
Yeah, I think so too.
I think he should look at it and let him make the decision.
Yeah, I think so too. I would make recommendations.
Was there a reason that we needed it sooner than that? Is it, do we need it sooner than that, Carol?
We got ninety days.
Yes.
It's valid for ninety days.
Well, I have to have the IT group coming out and find out what's going on with the server because it's, so I know there's something.
So we might have to take care of the server inhibition too. Whatever we do here, that server might be have to...
That's what that cost is with the S E T C, of that, that eight thousand, that's...
They've already had to come in and do upgrades to the desktop computers to get them to function properly. And they came in to do some maintenance on the system the other day, and they tried to log into it, and literally froze the server up, and they had to do a hard restart and everything like that. So to correct some of the things, the increased people that are, well, then the other part is the number of people using it, so the software that's in the server now is no longer supported, so we have to, that is twenty-eight hundred dollars. Then the licenses and everything. The other thing that's in that quote for, for M S E T C is our off-site backup. That, they got it for, it's a three-year contract, and, yeah, three, three-year server backup. And there's a possibility we'll get some, a better break on it, but right now, if something happens and that room gets wiped out, all your data's gone.
So we don't have off-site storage?
Right, at this time, not, not...
At this time, we have no off-site storage?
No, there is some backup, but it's...
Well, there is, but it's not the full system. I mean, right now, S E T C is posting it for us, but that's not what they normally do, so this is why it's going to be totally different vendor that will encrypt all this, so it's all secure and everything like that. I mean, there is no issues like, you know, for security on that. But this is just an upgrade that has to be done, um, I mean...
The server's not just for Cessell either. It's all our documents and so...
Documents and everything like that, so we're, we're working back and forth. It's, it's...
So will S E T C still be the, will they still?
IT service.
IT service, they just will not be the vendor that provides the off-site backup storage?
Off-site backup.
They will not be that?
No, they won't be the ones that do it.
Well, I would actually like to see, you know, they've given a quote here, maybe three twenty-five. I'd like to see what that is, what's all involved.
Well, they got a list of it.
Here's the list.
They have a list of billables. So are we, are we talking two separate things, S T, S E T C and?
Cessell are two different things. To make everything work properly, we have to do, this is hardware updates that have to be done anyhow, corrections and issues with the system.
But I'm still, why the, it's fifty, exactly fifty percent increase in Cessell's monthly fee? What warrants fifty percent increase, fifty percent increase?
I think they've redone their, their costs, their fees, instead of charging, instead of charging ten thousand dollars for you to get into the system, the new system, they are charging that, they're charging it every month.
Well, I'd like to see them at least come in and tell us why fifty percent, why it just, it's amazing that it's exactly fifty percent. And I've never seen, unless there's some drastic breakdown in the system, where they come up one day and say, "We're increasing your contract fifty percent."
It's because they're going to the new program, and what, instead of paying for certain upgrades plus a monthly fee, you're, we're now gonna pay this a flat monthly fee, we'll get updates and upgrades now.
Out. So we were paying upgrades last year, and it, and that came to an equivalent of fifty percent. I, I don't know, that's what I'd like to see. What, what have we been paying, six seventy-five? And then the additional items we got with that. I'm trying to see, are these equal when we compare an apples to apples here?
From what I saw, yes. I mean, the other part is, is the support for the Clarity that we have right now. There are issues in the program that they haven't been able to resolve by internal fixes of that. So unfortunately, the fix is the new program going to that, uh, from Clarity to Connect. But we're also getting these free modules that Carol had attended these classes, and they've just been holding out there And they've just been holding out there because they won't put them in with the Clarity. It has to, it only operates with a new system.
Only operates under the new system.
Well, I guess my only question is, is this just came out of nowhere for me? I mean, just, it just literally came out of nowhere. I've never, ever heard of this, ever. In any previous meetings, in any previous discussions. And all of a sudden, poof, now we've got a broken system, we need upgrades, it's getting... I've never heard we had the potential of having, I'm just saying. I, I, I've never, I've never heard it.
I know where you're coming from. Where part of this came from is that we brought external people in to get the payroll back up running and got us assisted with some other things. And with the people from Silverton, because they, they're operating on Connect already. They got it updated before it even got released. They have found these issues. And this is how we really came to know about this whole Clarity versus Connect was through them. They're showing us where the glitches are in our current system that can't be fixed.
So has those broken or those, whatever you call them in the system, caused the city, not as a result of that?
Yeah, it has.
And when are we gonna hear about that?
They already know about it. I, and I'm not the one that I...
Are you pointing to me?
Yeah.
You're pointing to me and what are you talking about?
Well, it's the taxes and some other issues that have come up with working on the system.
The taxes being?
Well, there's some back taxes that have to be paid because of the payroll. Because when it was outsourced. And this.
When it was outsourced? And are you, are we referring to the, to the unemployment rate? That was not correct in the system, is that what we're referring to?
There's that and then there's a couple other items, that Accounts Receivable. It's got an internal glitch, we're not, we can't use it.
I have not heard about that problem in Accounts Receivable area.
Okay, well...
We just found, yeah. We're not using that. That Accounts Receivable is what you'd use to bill, that the city needed to bill off for bills, like I use bills, that kind of thing. No, I don't think there's anything broken in the payroll in the payroll section.
Well, there was, it's taken a lot more work to get it up and get the system going right now, so...
It sounds like the bottom line is, we have software that the provider no longer supports, right?
Well, our, what's, what's...
So the software company has moved on to their new iteration of what they do. They're not supporting that anymore. So any problems or hey, can you help us with that? No, we can't because we don't support that anymore. So you either have to get on board with the new system. I mean, you can kinda just bump along with what you got and the things that don't work, you just don't use and kinda make it work. Or you get on board with their new system. Or you go out and see, is there something else comparable and we just go to some other stuff?
And I'm a hundred percent, I agree with you a hundred percent. I, I, I'm following that logic. But not just, at one meeting, all of a sudden it's blowing up. Now, at last year, you said, you know, we need to, we're gonna have to upgrade. I mean, usually that's how this works. We upgrade the system. It doesn't happen one night, all of a sudden we've got sixteen problems potentially causing liabilities to the city. You know, we've known about it before. But I think, again, go back to the original, I think it's a good, good job, first job for a city administrator to catch that. I'm with you, I agree with that. But I'm, I'm hearing reports back that we've gone to conferences and it's a great system and it's really working well. And now inherently, it's not a good system, we need to upgrade, it's gonna cost us fifty percent more to do that just in a monthly fee.
Can we, can we put this in hands of the new administrator and have a look at it? Do we have that time? Do we have time to do that?
Is that a, Carol, do we need it? Do we, what do we need, what's our immediate need?
Well, we'll keep working with what we have.
But there's no idea, where the city's not at risk. We're okay. That's my question. I mean, if we need immediate pension, we need immediate pension, but if...
So we're not gonna lose our data, our backup data?
I, it's being offsite, I mean, but it's not being encrypted and everything like that. We use this quote from SCTC to upgrade the system. These are the things that they're finding and they're need to be upgraded for the system to work properly. Now, with that, they made sure that when, if, or whoever, when it gets switched over to that Connect program, then the system will be able to handle it. So it's kind of a double-edged sword. I mean, the upgrade of the hardware and certain software in the system has to be done before that can even be, the new program can even be put in. So is there any, any immediate decision we have to make tonight on this?
Carol, were we wanting to, did we, were we talking about going to Connect? Were we wanting to do that time? Is that what this was about, or was this just information session?
I'm not sure whether it's just information or something. We need to act on it. I would prefer, since our, our incoming administrator is familiar with all this, he's a city administrator. In our interviews, I've, he should have maybe some input into it. Okay, but right now, you're gonna spend a lot of time for them to come in and try and figure out what's going on with the system.
SCTC?
Yeah. Because right now, the system keeps hanging up. Where it won't respond to anything of the input that they're putting into the system. They've actually had to do multiple restarts of the individual workstations. And it just, it keeps hanging up. So I, personally, I don't feel comfortable with what's going on with the server and everything like that. That is something that needs to be updated.
That's separate from Casell?
Yes.
Okay. That's an equipment issue, right?
Right. So what's the cost on that? The cost for that right now is eighty-three, eighty-four hundred dollars.
Has that been by date this year? Did we have that in there? Or was it after?
There's some money left in the budget this year for software. Stuff, I'm not sure how much, but...
To cover that?
At least part of it. Maybe part of it may have to go into, into lines.
No, there was, I asked that question and when they went back and looked, yes, there was money in the budget.
For this year?
For this year. I mean, if... So I wasn't aware that there was hardware issues. But we wanna do it tonight or wait?
Does that, see, does that, again, can we, can we do that next Thursday at the executive session?
No, we have to do it in open meeting.
Maybe?
Yeah. I guess maybe, are the IT guys saying like, boy, you guys better solve this today? Or are the IT guys going, this is what we recommend? But, because it, it would seem the best approach is let the new city administrator kinda come in see the whole thing, talk to the IT guy, talk to the software guys and then kind of, you know, make a full-on recommendation.
That's what I'd like to see.
But I don't know if the IT guys are like saying, fix this tomorrow or the whole thing's gonna be a big problem. I don't know.
And that's my question, is, is again, is our life, is the city at risk?
He, they're questioning that, but I'm, you know, I'd rather, I mean, if council's feeling is you want to put it off, alright?
Well, I'm not saying put it off. I'm just saying, if we're at risk, we probably need to take care of it. If, if it's not like Steve said, an immediate, immediate risk concern, then let's go another month and we'll have the new person here, what, July fifteenth? This could be his first priority that the council could set upon.
And he's familiar with all this stuff apparently.
He says he is.
Yeah.
I don't know. But I don't wanna go thirty days and the next thing you know, we're at risk of ten thousand dollars. It's something slip through, I don't know. This is the first I've heard of it.
Right, well, it, you can Band-Aid it for a couple of days probably. You know, you might be able to get another month out of it and work flawlessly. But from what the system's been doing here lately, well, apparently he's, he would probably make the same assessment as, as being made now. I don't see how to, how he could make another, come to another conclusion. I think I'd just assume, let's get this to...
Take care of the hardware?
Take care of it. Take care of the hardware at least. I mean, about the software. I'd say the hardware, basically.
Shouldn't have to go to that.
It's under ten thousand dollars.
It's under ten thousand dollars. Well, if he takes care of the hardware, that is still does take care of this Connect business.
No, correct, yeah. That would be a, another, another situation.
And the SPTC's saying, whatever changes they make, when Casell comes in, they're not gonna go, oh, no, this is not, this is not compatible, isn't gonna work.
This, this bid was taken off of Casell's, what they said was required.
Right. Well, I would actually...
And not all of these things would be needing to do right now, but some of it.
I'm working on it.
Yeah. It's wonderful right now.
So Gene, what are you, would you like to make a motion? Maybe we can get a vote on something.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we, at this time, move to do the hardware and software update for the server system and computers.
With the agreement that they will, they will be supportive of Casell's work that they're doing.
And that's what this came from, because that's...
Yeah, that's fine, but I wanna see, if we're gonna sign it or have them do the work, we need to have something that says that whatever upgrades and changes they make, if there's anything Casell said is wrong, we just fix. They're gonna do it at full cost. We can't come, come in and do all this stuff and then have Casell come in for a hundred thousand bucks and go, that's not exactly what we said, whoever wrote that was wrong. I'm just saying, I, I agree, let's approve it.
It's in this, it's in my IF pro saying the proposed estimates is based on minimum requirements requested from Casell for the Casell Connect upgrade. So I'm guessing that, I hope, I hope they're right.
Well, I hope they're right too. And I would just add a last sentence, any modifications to complement Casell outside of it or that are, you know, not consistent will be covered by SPTC. I'm just afraid we're gonna have two different parties working and it, they're gonna come back. I just wanna make sure, S, however they do it, whoever's gonna be in charge of that, that when SPTC comes and does it, they're compliant with the requirements. I've seen it with special software, they'll bring something similar, but not exactly the same. And there's one glitch and it, it doesn't match up. So however you, however you do that.
Well, I'll draw my motion. I'm just gonna let it die.
Why? Well, if SPTC, if we need it, but I want SPTC to work in, in conjunction with Casell to make sure that what the upgrades are meet or compliant with their stuff.
And that's what this quote was based on, but I'm not gonna put the words in their mouth if they're gonna...
They have to pay for the, any additional...
Yeah, any grades if it doesn't work. I will not, I'm not gonna...
Then how are we gonna do that? How are we gonna ensure that what they do, duh, what they do is consistent with what Casell needs?
Well, I, I took it when they went and looked at the system and they talked to Casell for this new, when, if, wherever it goes with the programs that we're operating on. They had the conversation, that's how this came back with this quote, but...
And that's fine, just so they're working with Casell to make sure that what they're doing is fine. They're not gonna give you guarantee, but I just wanna make sure we don't end up two different products and we're back here in three months with another problem. I don't know.
Now Sean, Sean McCourt, he, does he, does he do Casell troubleshooting? I thought we had talked about that at one time, that Sean would...
He has talked to them a few times, but he hasn't taken any classes.
He hasn't taken any classes with Casell.
Are you okay with that, Steve? Are you covered with that, if we have SPTC?
Uh, yeah, I, I think if we specifically ask them the question like, and we gave them the Casell information, which is sounds like what we did.
Right.
And said, what do we need to make this new program work? And they said, this is what you need. I think it's as simple as confirming that with them.
Right, that's...
It's our understanding that this will meet the needs for Connect. And if they say, yeah, that's what we designed for, something that will meet the needs for Connect. I think it's as, as simple as that.
Perfect. And you've got that, they told you that? Okay.
So I will, I will make a motion that we approve that eighty-three twenty-five with the understanding that they have approved and complimented everything with Casell for our upgrade. And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? I don't know if I can read that all, can you read that all?
I made a motion to approve SPTC's quote with the understanding that, I don't understand, that, that this quote was made to Casell requirements.
They will check with SL to make sure to meet all of the requirements.
So does everybody understand the motion?
If it's...
Okay, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
And...
So to follow up on that and just to make sure that happens, I don't know, Carol, if you'll be contacting them again or whatever, but you just have to say the council approved it, but we need to make sure that you guys can confirm that this will cover everything for Connect.
It's in the, it's in that tall square at the bottom.
With SPTC, is that what you're saying? Confirming that?
Yeah, just to confirm. And they, they'll say, yeah, that's why we wrote that sentence at the bottom of it.
And, and the second part of this, the Casell Connect, we will, we'll get more information and get it back to council. We have to, hopefully, maybe our new administrator will be able to do that. But I agree, I think we do need to get there.
Okay, we made that. Probably our business to know. Next is expenditure. Anybody have any question about the expenditure?
There was one thing that I had a question mark on. It was the, the renewal, the membership renewal fee for Cascade Employers. There, a bill came for that, am I?
I would say no.
I didn't know if that was something we were doing or not.
I would say no, that's, that's the new administrator under that.
Membership, wow, how about this?
What's a Neptune Trimble Ranger and Bell Clip?
That's a new handle. And a bell clip, that's so we can get a lot better in years.
That's all the new popular hardware for the, like, like we, we use.
Okay, any other questions regarding expenditure? Now, we'll go on to the minutes of the May ninth, uh, council meeting.
Right, right, we just need to pay the bills first, probably. So maybe make a motion?
We're gonna have to pay the bill.
Second?
Then move to the second, can we pay the bills? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries? Now, we'll go on to the minutes of the May ninth meeting and a special council, city council meeting, June second. Any corrections or additions?
I'll make a motion that we accept the council meeting minutes as presented for the May ninth, two thousand sixteen meeting.
I'd like to do something, wanna do something with the motion?
And I'll make the motion with that, um, minutes presented for the special council meeting on June seventh.
I need to abstain from it first because I was up here. But I can vote on the second because I'm up here. I think that's true. I love the answers.
Give me the motion, please. You accept it?
Yes.
Then move to the second, if we accept the minutes of those two meetings.
One second, so I can, I don't think I can vote on that.
Yeah, we better just do it at a time, it'd be simple.
City council meeting, May ninth.
So Gene, I mean, I think we got to kind of back up, let Gene make a motion for just one meeting at a time.
For the, I'll make a motion for the May ninth meeting that we accept the minutes as presented.
I'm sorry, Gene. Then move to the second, can we accept the meeting notes for May ninth, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we'll go on to the special city council meeting of June the second, two thousand sixteen.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes for the June second special city council meeting, uh, as presented.
Sorry. Then move to the second, can we accept the meeting notes for June second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I think the budget committee probably can just be, you know, noted, but I don't think they need to be approved, it's not a council meeting.
Yeah.
Budget committee, please.
It's for your reading. Okay, let's go on to the revenue statement. Are there any questions about it?
There is, uh, the ordinance that we passed last month, that, I can't remember the number, seven twenty-eight or something like that. We received the first one percent of that plan review, with the five percent of the overall. You see that eighteen thousand, that was the one percent. Today, we receive the other four percent, so I'll do-
Still with Mark?
Yep. So there'll be a, there'll be a big amount coming this next month of revenue. This is the other four percent of that ordinance.
Thank you, you have any continuing business that we need to deal with tonight?
Um, I'm not sure where to bring this up, but Ellen had asked me to bring up, uh, part-time employee, a possible part-time employee. With the subdivision moving forward in plans for gradients, sewer has been, have been approved. Is this a good place to bring this up? Just, uh, or should I bring it up under personnel?
Yeah, let's bring it under personnel. I tell you what, let's bring it up under, like, a new guy, administrator, bring it up. I mean, have any, we're not going to make any decisions.
No, I just wanted to let everybody know that this is something that's on the horizon. And it's Ben who's working volunteering for us. Um, and it would be a limited duration.
Okay.
Employee.
That's something you have to do with it?
No, it is not, um, it is something that he would, um, if we want, he could start July first, but it is something that I want everybody to know about and think about.
Or do that, if I have it.
Yeah.
Right, I got one question. We got the school excise construction tax, city one percent of seventy-four dollars and eighty-four cents. And then out there, we got seventy-four, eighty-four, forty, is that?
Oh, this, okay, the school, the construction excise tax
Right.
Is that money that would collect, at the same time we collect SDC's. That money, we saw that money went to the school. Well, we found out that one percent of it comes, actually comes back to the city. So we collected seventy-four, eighty-four, forty, this last month and week.
Oh, okay.
And so seventy-four, eighty-four is what the city's going to get out of that.
But that's not really revenue to the city.
No, it's not, it should have shown, I think, the other way around.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Is that, are you okay with that, Jim, that you made it for, for, for-
Yeah, I'll let Ellen know if that's-
Who wanted to commit reports, I don't have anything to report on the sewer. Bob, do you have anything on the reports?
No.
Gene, how about you?
Nothing.
Brian?
No, I just had a question about the first Monday. Are we, have we canceled those this year, our first, that first Monday or first Tuesday?
First Tuesdays, no, no, they're, well-
They're gone?
Mm-hmm, they're gone. They're in July long.
Cool.
So we, we're in this letter.
And the movies, guys? We're done with that?
Um, the movies-
I thought we were.
The movies haven't, we weren't, we see many people coming.
Since Carrie left, who was coordinating on that, Fourth of July parade, that's all we're going to go.
The Christmas parade?
Fourth of July.
That's in state, so we don't do anything on top of here.
Harvest Space?
Harvest Space, that's theirs, and we have all our-
Okay, Gene, did you have a comment, please? Brian, how about you? Did you have any? Jim?
And then, um, so, school is out tomorrow, um, near the end of the week. And, um, personnel, Lisa has started in the office. And we have an executive session this weekend to talk to our potential city administrator.
That's Thursday.
Thursday, yes. And I, would it be possible to invite, um, Randy Cranston to the executive session? Would we be okay with that? And meet-
For what reason?
Um, meet the city administrator, if there's any-
Well, I think there's questions, and he has of us, isn't he?
Yes.
So I don't know, maybe it should be added, uh, so?
No, I, what? The executive, I mean, I think it should be the council, not, not a meeting, really, of, of-
Thinking that out? Okay.
If they want, if you want to start.
Does that mean you start at five or six?
Um, I thought we had it down as six.
Six on the computer, and you have five here.
Yeah, six.
I forgot to change the timer, I'm so sorry.
And Steve, you're going to be there?
Uh, if you want me to be.
Um, I think so, but if there's a contract issue, I mean, uh, we're open.
Is everything okay? Do we have that, should we track back from our?
Yes, we can track back.
Can you get that to us before Thursday?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
This is yours, you can tag it up over there where you want.
Okay.
Put it on your door. Has a fan or a light six?
It said six at five.
Six at Thursday. Okay.
Oh.
One question before you adjourn. Uh, I appreciate, and I'm sure the citizens appreciate, you're cleaning the streets. I'm just wondering if you could put a bigger spigot on your front? Because the dust is, it would settle a lot more of the dust.
The worst part of that is, when it gets back in the hopper, and there's a fan back there blowing it, I can either shoot out the bottom, or I can shoot out the side, and-
Well, it's not-
It's not really because the dirt I'm sweeping on the side, it's more of the dirt in the back that's creating the dust. And there are nozzles back there, but, you know, it's an older sweeper, and it might not be quite adequate.
Could you get a mower on it?
Okay, now, we'll adjourn.
Thank you.